Yeah, I spoke about it in the morning one morning.
How are you? For the city council, it's May 21st. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It's good to see many of you here tonight for a variety of reasons. One quick announcement before we do our roll call. I'd like to recognize our own state Senator Wendy Schuler in the back of the room. Glad to have you with us here tonight, Senator. So, welcome. Well, you can come back anytime. Come back anytime. And good to have everyone else as well. There's probably several other distinguished guests that I haven't mentioned, but you're welcome as well. But we're glad to have Wendy especially. We do need to have a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Everyone is present, or do you have a call?
Excellent, thank you. We have an agenda before us. Any changes we need to consider before we approve that agenda? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sellers?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We've got the council minutes for May 7. Any concerns with those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go to the work session minutes for May 14. May 14, yes. Same thing there. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we'll acknowledge those as well, and we'll go on to the bills. Do you have a warrant register with today's date on it? Questions, comments, concerns on those bills?
One of the smaller ones we've seen lately.
Yes, sir. I noticed that as well. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us tonight, sir?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Lynn?
Um, I wanted to, as we get into the summer months, uh, we're gonna have kids riding around bikes, scooters. We got a lot of people, you know, around town as the weather starts to warm up. Please be careful as you're driving around town. Um, our family pet got hit on Saturday by a driver that wasn't paying attention. So, just be careful as you're driving around town, please. We, uh, I'd hate for any kid to get hit or anything else, so... That's all I got.
Perks?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Well, um, I just read the National Guard quote says, "These are the 10 worst places to retire in Wyoming." And we did not make that list, and that's great. We never did, yes. Everybody wants to read it. It's pretty, pretty interesting. But other than that, I have none.
Sellers?
I just wanna reiterate the need to be mindful of people who are struggling with mental health issues and depression. We had a person in our community die by suicide yesterday. And if you go back and you look at the numbers and the history, it's really quite alarming how many we do. We work hard at the Suicide Task Force to get word out and do a lot with the kids especially and stuff. Middle-aged men are the highest risk and that we have in our communities, in our county. So, just be mindful. Sometimes it only takes a second to acknowledge somebody or to change their course just a little bit. So, remember 988 and to give that number out to people if they're struggling. Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Hagman?
Just wanted to thank everybody who came out to the last Thursday to the National Veterans Awareness Ride. We had quite the turnout, quite the amount of bikes. It was such an honor to be part of Evanston's community that helped bring in these riders and veterans that are going on towards the wall in remembrance. Veterans are a soft spot in my heart, as everybody knows by now. And thank you, Councilman Lynch and Councilman Sellers, for also coming to the dedication ceremony outside of the courthouse. That was amazing to be there and to have us all there. And a big sorry to anybody who planted their garden this past weekend like myself. So, I'm looking at dark black herbs. So, I'm right there with you if you did the same thing.
Thank you. I'll just, a quick, offer a little bit of a follow-up. You'll indulge me for a second. Following our work session last week, we talked about some, the courtyard and the project there. A fairly engaged discussion, and I know that there's a lot of emotion around that project on both sides of that equation, and I'm respectful of that. Following that meeting, I, we, as a city, reached out to visit with Mr. Davis. We were not able to meet. His schedule wouldn't allow us to meet, so we did try to meet with him. We hope to have a meeting in the future very quickly. I think Friday morning we have something scheduled, and we'll hopefully have some productive discussion. But I didn't want to leave that out there to say that we had not attempted to reach out to Mr. Davis or to the Historic Preservation Committee. We certainly have, and we look forward to those discussions in the future. So, I'll leave that there, and we'll go on. We do have a couple of special events. I don't know if they're special hearings or special orders, but they're special nonetheless. We do have a swearing-in ceremony to accomplish. I understand we have a new officer, and I think those are fantastic to do.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the council. It's hard to find someone who loves the work shift work anymore and on hours as we go over the public trust. He's quite a bit involved, taking his job. I'm glad to say we've got a gentleman named Bruce Taylor. Now, we welcome him to our agency and welcome to the community here. Mr. Officer Taylor, come up for a second, please. Dan, do I do that, or do you do that?
You do. You do the police.
I better take my glasses. Senior moment.
And the microphones, sir.
Microphone?
No.
Okay. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bruce Taylor, do solemnly swear that I will support...
I, Bruce Taylor, do solemnly swear that I will support...
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you.
I know that I have said this on other occasions similar to this, but I'll say it again because I think it is worthy of our thought. I personally have been involved quite extensively with the police department in emergency services, and particularly the ambulance, and worked with our police officers and the police department over the course of several decades now. And I have always appreciated our law enforcement officers, our police officers, for the protection they provide to our community, what they, the protection they have on occasion provided to me personally. And so, I take this oath and this swearing-in ceremony, I take that pretty serious. And so, we're glad to have you. We're thankful and grateful for the commitment you're willing to make to our community, and we thank you for that. We've also got a special Patriot Award here on our agenda. And Mr. Wild, tell us what we're recognizing here. I think this is pretty cool, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So, I'd like to have Herman Royball join me.
If you get him to swear in that same oath, that would work.
I think he might have.
He might have already. I suspect that's...
So, Councilman Welling is going to read the reason for the award. The award is being presented to Herman because he's been recognized.
Mr. Turner is here, too, by the way.
Is he? Well, then he should join us up front.
He should join us. Come on up here. Do you want me to read, or help him read?
You can have him read it if he's here. I'm good with that.
Do you want me to read it? I'll read it.
From the moment I mentioned to my boss that I was joining the Army National Guard, excuse me, he was extremely supportive. He went out of his way multiple times to go to HR himself and figure out questions that I had regarding my, our personnel policy. On top of everything, my employer's been paying me the difference in my wages while I've been away at basic training and at AIT. Each time my wife and in-laws run into my boss, bosses or his boss, they're always asking how I'm doing and are excited for this opportunity. And now that I'm in AIT and have my phone again, my boss is keeping me up to date on things that I'm missing at work. And all in all, I believe my employer deserves to be recognized for their amazing and continued support. Jonathan Turner.
Thank you, Herman.
Excellent. That was fun. Herman is a shining addition to the city and has been for a long, long time. We're thrilled to have them both, him and Jonathan. So, congratulations to all of you. We'll go on to our consent agenda item. We got one item there, limited malt beverage from the chamber. Any concerns with our consent agenda before we move forward with it? If there is not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch? Mr. Sellers, seconding? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's approved. I think I saw Tammy back in the back someplace.
Yeah, she's hiding.
Oh, she's hiding back there. Thank you, Tammy.
She is looking for volunteers, too, to help her out.
Good luck with the brew fest. We've got a little unfinished business. We'll start there with ordinance 2401. Ms. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, ordinance 2401, an ordinance approving and authorizing the final plat for the Burnt Hill Edition located in the city of Evanston, Wyoming, being more particularly described herein. This is before the council on third and final reading.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson?
So, I'll just quickly give a summary. This subdivision, the Burnt Hill Edition, is located just on the north side of West Cheyenne Drive. It's between Overthrust Road and Yellow Creek Road. The area showing in blue is, on the map, is city-owned property. The square piece, you can kind of see in the yellow outline adjacent to that, is owned by the subdivider. The subdivider is proposing to convey as part of the major subdivision requirements portion of that property, 0.559 acres, shown there for the public land dedication. The other part of that public land dedication will be Lot 8. That's showing in the upper side, kind of the darker orange, square area. The City Subdivision Review Committee has reviewed the subdivision. It contains all of the utility easements that's needed to develop these lots. We've looked at several different plans for some of the smallest lots within the development, and they are developable. One of the items that we've been working on throughout this process has been the access, that's showing in orange, across All West property. The subdivider and All West has been working on an agreement where All West is the owner of Lot 2, Block 1. That kind of long skinny flag-shaped property showing on the map here. They're going to retain that. There will be no access off of West Cheyenne Drive through that Lot 2. Access will be through that dark orange area. That dark orange area will also serve as a utility easement for other utility providers. As you can see, there's a break in the... They've shifted the utility easement on the west side of Lot 2 just onto Lot 1. And it, that 50-foot-wide access easement serving as a utility easement as well picks that up back along the street heading east. So... So, as I mentioned, All West and the subdivider has been working on a agreement. And I mentioned that second reading that we would bring this back when we have a signed agreement with them. We do have that for that, so I believe we are prepared to move forward with third reading on this.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
In addition to the agreement Mr. Jacobson mentioned, the subdivider has executed subdivision agreement and a deed to that parcel that Mr. Jacobson was referring to for the land, public land dedication requirement. And those were delivered to Mr. Newsom, and he brought them in. And I have those ready to go for recording.
Nice. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Is, we've got, this is on third reading. We've got a sponsor. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2401 on third reading?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Perks?
I'll second it.
Welling, seconding. Any discussion?
Sounds like we got everything tied up, all the loose ends, so that's good.
It may look like it's in order. Any further discussion? The only thing I would just say, I appreciate Mr. Ellingford and his investment in our community. That's, this is a large undertaking, and we appreciate that very much. We hope it's wildly successful for him. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved on third and final reading. We'll go on to ordinance 2403. Ms. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, ordinance 2403, an ordinance approving and authorizing the final plat for the Gateway Edition located in the city of Evanston, Wyoming, being more particularly described herein. This ordinance is before the council on second reading.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes, the Gateway Edition is located on, at the west interchange just on the south side of I-80, showing on the map. It involves these two properties. One is a lot within a previously platted subdivision, which is addressed for 93 Prospector Drive. The other one is a non-platted parcel located at 755 Prospector Drive. That was the former location for the Porter's Fireworks Store. There is a proposal to develop the property at 755 Prospector Drive. Steph has reviewed the site development plans for that. With that, there are some access... I'll look right to the plat. See if we got a blow-up view. So, they're proposing to shift the boundaries of the two properties. It'll increase the size of the former Porter's site, which is Lot 2, shown on here. An access easement for emergency vehicles is provided on Lot 1, Block 1. The lot sizes do meet the minimum lot size requirements of our city code. And there will be a shared access along the front. There is a 10-foot utility easement located along the property frontage. And there's an existing one that's located just in the upper northeast corner, shown on there. It might be a little hard to see there, but... So, all easements have been shown on the map. That's needed. Again, the City Subdivision Review Committee has reviewed this subdivision. There are no concerns from the City Subdivision Review Committee. We recommend approval on second reading.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Jacobson or anybody else before we move on with this? I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2403 on second reading.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I heard both of you. He motioned. Did somebody else second? You seconded, if you're not... I got all sorted, Jesse. I'll put him down. That's fine.
You gotta be quick around here to get these in, you know?
I have Mr. Lynch making that motion and Mr. Lynn seconding. Is there any discussion, or yeah, any discussion? We similarly applaud this investment in our community as well. Hope this is also a very successful endeavor for you. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on second reading. Thank you. We'll go on to new business. There we have, first off, a pre-application sketch plan review. Mr. Jacobson again, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so per city code, there's a pre-application review procedure in which the new subdivision, major subdivision, is to be reviewed by both the Planning Commission and City Council for discussion. It's just an input. There's no decisions that's required for this. So, tonight, we're gonna present the Barber Edition. It's located within, just adjacent to the Twin Ridge 1 subdivision. You can see it highlighted in red. It's on the east side of Yellow Creek Road and just kind of southeast, up the hill, a little bit from Holly Park. And what is being proposed is a four-lot subdivision extending Barber Drive. That's presently there. It's a sub-street. Extending that to include a subdivision. There would be a short extension of water and sewer services and other utilities as well. Carbon gutter sidewalk as part of that is... The lots, just kind of looking here, looks like they're all around, around 12,000-ish square feet. That does meet the minimum lot size requirements for the zone that it's located, so... We do have the subdivider here. If you'd like to offer any comments?
I don't think I have any at this point, Mr. Paxton.
Excuse me. It's pretty straightforward.
I guess one question I have, and one can answer. Were these lots, was this unsubdivided or unplatted? Or was this in some other configuration prior to this?
This is unplatted property, yes. It hasn't been platted yet. So, you see the areas on this map, those areas that have been platted. So, this falls just outside the boundaries of those.
Excellent. You can do it. Questions from Mr. Jacobson or Mr. Paxton, either one? It's good to me. We don't need to act on this at all tonight. This is just a discussion, right?
No, it's just discussion. Any input?
I think it's a natural fit for that neighborhood. I think it'll work out real well.
Nice building lots. Anything else on this one, then, Mr. Jacobson?
I don't have anything else on this.
Looks good. Please?
This is what, probably, probably gonna rename this Ridgecrest Subdivision Number 3. There's already a Number 1 and a Number 2 up on the hill, and it's more appropriate to call this Ridgecrest Number 3. I'd just like to say this is my 44th year in this room, doing...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paxton. Appreciate that. And that name change seems fairly minor. I don't think that'll be the holdup to any of it. Okay, well, now we'll go on to Resolution 2425. Ms. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2425, a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat of the Bell Zoo subdivision, a subdivision located in the south half northeast quarter of Section 8 Township 15 North, Range 120 West of the 6th Principal Meridian, U N County, Wyoming, as more particularly described herein.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson?
So, this is a county subdivision that's brought to the city. There are some, there is a state statute that allows for city council review and approval of subdivisions that are proposed within a mile of the corporate limits. The subdivision is just a little bit out of a half-mile from the city. I believe the southern boundary line shown there in yellow is about the half-mile mark from the city. A year ago, well, last year, it wasn't a year ago, but last December, the city council reviewed a subdivision that created a lot adjacent to this, and that is... It was called the Warren Hales subdivision, if any of you could recall that one. So, that created a one-lot subdivision. Included with that was an access. So, basically, what we have here is we got two unplatted parcels. A smaller one towards the front, larger one to the back. The owner would like to combine those, as I understand, into one lot. So, this is the proposed subdivision. It's 31.806 acres in size. The green area showing on the subdivision that the council reviewed back in December provides access to that... provides access to that property. There isn't a very large street frontage. Along there, it's 7.92 feet, along Highway 89 North. So, yeah, there was a 30-foot-wide access easement provided that serves both the Warren Hales Edition and will serve this lot as well. There are some utility, or drainage and ditch easements showing on the property, one in, along the front, on Highway 89 North, and there's two of them that pass through Lot 1. You can kinda see in the blue meandering lines. There is an existing power line easement, or power easement, that's located just off to the east, in the lower southeast corner. If you can see that, that's a little red shaded area. So, easements are provided, access is provided to the lot. The city comprehensive plan did not address land beyond our half-mile boundary of the So, right now, the county assessor's office is showing this, the land use as a commercial or, I believe it was a commercial, and residential use. And that, if the property has been used agriculturally, so if the zoning continues as an agricultural use, and that, a minimum lot size, if the city was to expand to the north, minimum lot size for agricultural use would be 10 acres. So, this lot does meet that requirement if and when, like I said, the city expands. There aren't any water and sewer, or expansion of the city infrastructure that would be required for this subdivision. City staff doesn't see any concerns with the, with an approval of this.
Thank you. And I'll just, in an effort of full disclosure, this particular subdivision, I have also looked at in my position with the county, had been aware of it through Mr. Hales developing this as a county subdivision. I counseled with Mr. Harris prior to this meeting, to, I needed to recuse myself, I have nothing to gain or lose from this subdivision, so... But I will say, just, you presented that very well. Mr. Jacobson, the one thing that I will maybe clarify is that county zoning on this particular parcel is ARD, is what we call it, or a blanket zoning of agricultural/resource/ development, which is a blanket zoning for the county, anything that isn't residential, commercial, or industrial. This particular subdivision is ARD-zoned. Designation that the assessor's office may give it may be different in relative to taxation, but zoning in and of itself is, in this case, agricultural. You're right about that. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I want to do, let the motion pass.
Mr. Sellers, is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Perks seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. I guess we'll keep you there for a little while. Resolution 2426, Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Resolution 2426, a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat for the Griffin Le France 2nd Edition, a subdivision within the city of Evanston, Wyoming, as more particularly described herein.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson.
Okay. Lost a little bit of the controls on my arrows here, so cut 'em back. So, the Griffin Le France Edition is proposing to subdivide lots 2 and 3, Block 1 of the original Griffin Le France Edition subdivision, which is highlighted here. It involves properties that are addressed 642 Country Club Drive and 624 Country Club Drive. 624 Country Club Drive is the one located on the north side. So, they are proposing to take those two lots and create a three-lot subdivision. This is what's being proposed. So, there is an existing house on Lot 1, and there is an existing house on Lot 2. Lot 3 does have an accessory building that will be separated from the house on Lot 2. There is an access point for Lot 3 that's provided. I believe it's about 35 feet in width along the street frontage. That provides adequate access when the access is improved. Currently, the subdivider is not proposing to improve the access to Lot 3. There will need to be emergency access provided where we have existing structures and that, so they can be protected. And I'll kinda scroll forward on that one, but this is the, they are proposing to do a temporary cross-lot access and record that as a separate document with the plat, so they don't have to come back and amend the plat. Once, there are some conditions that, you know, before that can go away, and that, one is, there's going to have to be a building permit pull for a structure on Lot 3, which is shown in the yellow shade, and they will, let's see. Kinda skip here. So, a structure on Lot 3, and when access to Lot 3 has been improved, and that, currently, there's some landscape enhancements that have been installed as part of the lot to the north. And when an instrument is, the third item is when an instrument is recorded vacating the temporary access easement. Now, those three things occur, the temporary access, cross-lot access easement will remain Just gonna head back a little bit. The lot size, lot sizes showing here are, oh, 0.27 acres is the smallest lot on Lot 2, and then larger lots on Lots 1 and 3. This property is owned low-density residential developing. There's not a minimum lot size requirement for the zone. Lot size is a function of open space. There's a minimum of 5,000 square feet of open space that's required for that. I've looked at Lot 2 since it is the smallest. It is developed with a house. It does have parking that's been improved on the property. So, looking at the open space on Lot 2, it does meet the minimum open space requirement. So, obviously, developing Lot 1 or 3, they would meet that open space requirement as well, so lot size is adequate. I did kinda touch on that there's, with the subdivision proposal, it will separate an accessory building from the current property at 642 Country Club Drive, and that'll place that into a non-conforming status. The city code defines a major subdivision, or states that minor subdivision shall not conflict with any provisions of the master plan or zoning ordinance. So, this does place this into a non-conforming condition, whereas presently, it is conforming with city ordinance. I'd also like to note, too, there is a section in our city code, Section 22-4, states that "Nothing contained in Chapter 22 subdivision of land shall be construed to grant any applicant a right to subdivide. Approval or disapproval of a plat shall be within the sole discretion of the city council." So, the city council has full discretion to either approve or disapprove. So, it does place the accessory building in a non-conforming status if and when Lot 3 is developed with a house. It'll bring that back into conformity. There is a need for additional residential properties in Evanston. There is a housing shortage, and so this isn't necessarily a bad thing that I see. Water and sewer services will be extended when a building permit is pulled for Lot 3, for a new home. Water and sewer main lines are located within the vicinity of Lot 3. They do not need to cut into the street for that, so we would recommend that they install those services when they build the home on the lot. So, if the Griffin Le France 2nd Edition is approved by the city council, as a condition of approval, staff would recommend that the subdivider execute and record the temporary cross-lot access agreement and the subdivider agreement.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Members of the council, I do have the temporary access agreement executed and is in my office, ready to record. We're just waiting for the subdivider agreement. I resent it, excuse me, yesterday, to Mr. Wall to present, so we will obtain those and record them with the subdivision.
So, we're okay to move forward tonight, then, correct?
The Griffins are here. I don't know if they would like to add anything to...
I think we remember the work session that we had not too long ago. I think they explained very well what their wishes are and what they're wanting to do here. I remember that well, so... I'll ask for an introduction on this resolution.
I'll introduce, with the motion to pass.
I'll second it.
End with a motion. Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion?
I think this ended up being a nice compromise to get done what you wanted to do, right?
Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Tea is annoying, sir. Appreciate it.
That could be an excuse for a minute. Hey, Ellen, would you quieten that turkey down, though, when I'm teeing off on Number 4? Would you quieten the turkey down while I'm teeing off on Number 4?
It is a little bit annoying.
Feel like he's laughing at me if I hit it bad.
We'll go on to Resolution 2427. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Resolution 24-27, a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of an agreement to provide professional services with JUB Engineers, Inc., to provide design and engineering construction management services described herein for the Grass Valley Sewer Lift Station Project.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, as member of the council, I thought Duane did such a good job, he should just continue this process. But really, what we're here for is to seek, to get approval for this professional services agreement. It's for our Grass Valley Lift Station project that needs to be upgraded. This project does have ARPA money tied to it and has budgetary stuff already figured out, so this would be the next step, to begin the design and the process of that.
Excellent. I think we're fairly aware of this project as well. Is there any questions for Mr. Newsom before we act on this? Is there an introduction on this resolution? I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Lynch with a motion, Mr. Perks seconding. Mr. Sellers had to step out. Well, he'll be back, I'm assuming, but we still have a quorum, so we'll keep moving, I think, so... Any discussion? No, there he's back now. Welcome back, Mr. Sellers. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Thank you, sir. Ordinance 2404. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 24-04, an ordinance of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, amending Section 7-112B to 7-113, the code of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, relating to storm water runoff plan review and drainage fees of the city of Evanston, Wyoming Storm Water Runoff Control Ordinance, providing for setting of storm water plan review and drainage fees by resolution adopted by the Evanston City Council. I do need a sponsor for this one.
I'll go ahead and sponsor this.
Perks will be our sponsor. Mr. Newsom.
So, this one came about, maybe because of my newness. I was trying to update the fee schedule, that one of these items is associated with the stormwater first, and quickly realized that code within these sections puts a hard number for these respective fees that have probably been there for eons. But the goal of this is try to give us an opportunity to move with inflation and time to make these fees more of a budgetary yearly annual assessment, more than stuck in the code. So, this one ties to storm water fees that are established, and now, we just have an opportunity to be able to change them as needed.
So, this will change this at the same time we change them all? It won't be a separate ordinance?
No, it'll be part of the normal fee.
Simplify things.
It does. And so, that's the intent of what we're trying to do, just give us the opportunity to assess annually rather than stuck in the code.
If I remember right, we made this change sometime back, a couple of years back, and for whatever reason, this particular fund or fee was inadvertently left out, is the way I remember it.
That's my understanding.
Brings it back into everything else that we do relative to water and sewer and storm water and all of those enterprise funds. It gives us the opportunity to manage that similarly as we do the rest of it.
Correct. Other fees within this schedule are, have a similar statement to where it's assessed at the annual budget, and this one just wasn't.
Excellent. We've got a sponsor. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2404 on first reading.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn seconding. I heard him over here first, if that's okay, Mr. Sellers. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on first reading. Ordinance 2405. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2405, an ordinance of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, amending Section 7-71C, the code of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, relating to grading permit fees of the general requirements of the city of Evanston, Wyoming Erosion Control Ordinance, providing for setting of grading permit fees by resolution adopted by the Evanston City Council. This provides the same changes as ordinance 2404 to grading permit fees, and this also requires a sponsor, Mr. Mayor.
Somebody else sponsor. Mr. Sellers is gonna be our sponsor. Excellent. Mr. Newsom.
Same story. This one ties to grading fees, which had a designated dollar amount for that particular purpose. And again, I'm just trying to clean it up, have us have the opportunity to look at this outside of the code in an annual budget fee resolution.
Excellent. We've got a sponsor. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2405 on first reading?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks.
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling seconding. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? That's approved on first reading.
Thank you, Harris.
Resolution 2428. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between High Country Behavioral Health and the city of Evanston, Wyoming Police Department pertaining to referral services for priority population clients.
Thank you, sir. Chief?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Rash, please. Chief. So, this is a memorandum...
So this is a MOU with High Country Behavioral Services, and what it's for is that they have the contract with Wyoming Department of Health to provide mental health services for seven counties. And part of this contract requires that they establish an MOU with primary stakeholders, and we are one of those, and also notify the stakeholders of priority population clients as defined by Wyoming statute, and they've done both of this MOU. It really has no financial impact on the City of Evanston. The Evanston Police Department does use High Country for what we refer to as most likely as Title 25 Emergency Detentions, and I know Councilman Sellers often talks about the suicide problem that we have in this county and state. And so when an officer places someone that's a threat themselves or others, a significant threat, under Title 25 Emergency Detention, within the first 24 hours, we must use a trained, licensed mental health professional to assess the individual, and we use High Country Behavioral Services for that.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with motion to pass.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion?
I think it's very valuable for law enforcement to have this available to them.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Resolution 2429. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2429, a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat of the Mandarfeld subdivision, a subdivision located in the southeast quarter, southwest quarter, and the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, Section 24, Township 15 North, Range 121 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, U N County, Wyoming, as more particularly described herein.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson.
Yeah, I'm here in council. This is a subdivision that's being spearheaded again by the county. It is located within a mile as well of the city corporate limits. This is a property that's located just off of Airport Road or County Road 111. Its address 568 Airport Road, and what is being proposed is to take this four-acre piece and divide it into three lots. Lots One and Two, yeah, I do have to blow it. Lots One and Two are accessed off of County Road. There is a 30-foot wide private access easement that will serve both Lots One and Lot Three. So access to Lot Three has been provided as part of this. There is a 10-foot utility easement proposed along the street frontage, which is fairly typical, and then a 10-foot wide utility easement that is shared across Lots One and Two that extend to Lot Three, Block One, to provide services to that lot as well. So access, utility easements work well with the subdivision. The lot sizes are about 1.2 acres to 1.5 acres in size. I believe that's our last slide on that, but our comprehensive plan does address land use as the city expands west and north to include this area at some point. There is an industrial use located along Airport Road. The master plan does talk about an expansion of industrial uses up along Airport Road, possibly uses that might serve the airport in some fashion or be related to the airport. So if and when, again, if the city does expand its boundaries to include this property at some point, these lots two are adequately sized. Our industrial zones for minimum lot size requirements in the city for any of our industrial zones, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. So the city doesn't have any issues with, or the city staff doesn't have any issues with this. There's not going to be any city infrastructure extended to this property, so staff would recommend approval of this as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Also, on this one, this is another one that I have been involved in, and again, I have nothing to gain or lose from what Mr. Mandarfeld desires to do here. So I will entertain, or is there an introduction on this resolution? I'll introduce with a motion to pass. Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion?
The old Kiva radio station.
That's correct. The radio station, yes, that's on the Lot Two there in a few years.
And they've got that through a tax.
He's had it for quite a while. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Now we need to have a discussion and a motion regarding the retirement of a service dog from the police department. Chief, take us away.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the council, this is a canine gator. He was donated to the City of Evanston about eight years ago. He's approximately an eight-year-old canine service animal that's been in our service. Currently, he is not assigned to an officer. I don't believe canine gator has any health issues at this time, but he's getting about eight years old, he's getting towards the end of his service life, not the animal's life, but the service as a canine. At this time, we would, in order for him to place canine gator with another officer, it's quite an extensive and costly investment to the City of Evanston for an animal that may only have one more year of service. Canine gator is currently at Evanston Animal Shelter. He's permitted to play in the yard, and we've had a highway patrolman working with him. But he's given a lot of faithful years to the city, and I think he deserves a family, and we would like to get him adopted out and moved on. Being a police service dog, we're kind of selective about who we'll adopt him, and we want to make sure, we know he's a larger dog, and he's an older dog. Not a lot of families want to take that on. We have found one, Mr. Christopher Dally, he is here today, and I would, I think it's time we get canine gator out of the animal shelter and into a home, and I'd like to move forward with this.
Seems reasonable to me.
Absolutely. I think that's a fitting retirement for one of our service animals.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this transfer to Christopher Dally of this service animal.
I'll make that motion. I think it's a wonderful idea.
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion?
I think they usually go home with their handlers, so this is kind of an unusual situation, isn't it?
It is. The handler, he has other dogs, and he's recently gotten married since he's had canine gator. These are high-derived animals. They tend to destroy furniture, and he's been a victim of that.
That's what I tell you.
And along with his other animals, it just unfortunately is not a good fit for him. And it's with sadness and sorrow, but we need to find a better fit.
I think we got one. That's good.
I noticed, I watched you clap your hands together, so are you excited about this? Hey, that seals the deal for me. Oh, really? I didn't see. Oh, I didn't even see that. Excellent. Bring this.
Is that Gator?
No.
Okay.
I didn't think so. Is that a Bill? Okay.
It's not a Mannor law.
Okay, well, any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that it's so important for us to really acknowledge the animals that participate in law enforcement and our military. We have a long tradition in this country of, we have monuments to our horses and mules and from World War I and World War II, and, you know, there are veterans as well. Their service, they save lives in more capacities than we, than anybody other than their handlers actually know. So I think this is awesome. I think every single one should come home.
Thank you. Mayor, councilmember Hagman, I agree.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Deal. All yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We'll go on to remarks from departments. Let's go around, let's see. Mr. O'Neill, do you have anything for us tonight?
Mr. Robinson? Oh, please. All right.
Our spring cleanup event happened this last week. Extremely busy over there. There shouldn't be any trash left in town with the amount that came in. Saturday, we had 530 loads come in, just Saturday alone, which we have never seen before. We've seen a 200-vehicle day, 220-vehicle day, but Saturday was just crazy.
Holy, wow. It's raining when we do this.
We're still hauling trash today and tomorrow and maybe Thursday, too, trying to get it all gone, but just a really good event, and hopefully everyone is able to take care of their stuff. Also, it's Public Works Appreciation Week nationally, so just a shout out to all the guys and what they're doing.
Absolutely.
And we have two street sweepers, and they are out, Tim.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
My knee thanks you.
We appreciate, appreciate that, and thank you to our, to our everybody involved in that recognition, that we've got great, we've got great city workers. I just appreciate every single one of them.
You know, can I say something on this one? You know, when I first ran for council, I drove up and down every alley in Evanston. They are so much cleaner now than they used to be, so thanks.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Mr. Lynch, do you have anything for us? Mr. Newsom? Larson? Chief Rash, do you have anything more for us?
No, sir, ma'am.
Mr. Jacobson, I don't want to pass by you without recognizing, you got something to add? Okay. Mr. Harris?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris?
I do, Your Honor. Mr. O'Neill is not going to recognize his efforts, so I'm going to do it for him.
Please.
Last Friday, the mayor and Mr. O'Neill and I traveled to Green River for the hearing on the Soda West Project Industrial Siding Application. That's the new Soda Solution Mine that has an anticipated construction cost of $1.6 billion. That was the hearing before the Industrial Siding Council to issue a permit for that facility. In that process, there were identified through a sales and use tax distribution formula $26 million of potential impact assistant funds for communities affected in what they call, in what the application says, the affected area of impact or area of impact, AOI. The long and the short of it is, is that we obtained some information from Sweetwater County, and Rocco made an analysis of these impacts to the City of Evanston, Wyoming, based primarily upon worker and family numbers, total workers, which is 1,400, wasn't it, at peak?
1,440 at peak.
1,440 at peak. This is a two-year project, 25 and 26 years. His analysis concluded that, based upon available housing in the three-county area, Lincoln, Sweetwater, and Uwena, the west half of Sweetwater, really, but in any event, his analysis indicated that the City of Evanston on a per capita basis had impacts that we could prove of 676,000 and some odd dollars. His analysis was not even questioned. There were no questions from the council, and that impact was granted in full by the Industrial Siding Council. When construction starts in January of '25, the City of Evanston will receive 24 equal payments of that amount. So I want to thank Rocco for his expert analysis. He did a great job, and like I said, we are fortunate. Lincoln County took quite a haircut, as they say, from the Industrial Siding Council because they couldn't prove their impact from their projects. Now, the other thing is, and I believe, is it Dry Fork or Dry Creek? There's a Dry Creek mining project that's also in the works that we will be seeing probably toward the, this fall, the end of this year. That is a project that is four times the size of this one. So that's a $5 billion project. We'll be coming back to you with information on that, but I just wanted to thank Rocco. He did an expert analysis of that.
Excellent. Thank you. And strong work.
And Mark is giving you too much credit. He put it into the documents and submitted it to the commission itself. He did most of the work.
We thank you both.
What does that, teamwork makes the dream work or something like that? Strong work, strong work, both of you. I went along, but I was just...
Mr. Mayor, we're going to get in a fistfight about who did what, so.
Take it out on the golf course. I was there to watch the hearing, and we were represented in our analysis and in our request, we were represented well. That goes to both of us, both of you. We were also, as a speaking part of that hearing, we were represented well by Gary Welling with the U N County Economic Development Commission, who helped us with that as well. So strong work to all of you, all of you. Public participation. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council for any reason tonight? Mr. Horn, please.
Mayor Williams, City Council members. My name is Shelley Horn, and I am here as the vice chair of the Evanston Historic Preservation Commission to clarify our purpose. Our chairman, Jim Davis, would not only address you here tonight, but he is in Cody in support of a grant to build a Lincoln Highway kiosk at the state park. So let me start very briefly with a background. The Historic Preservation Commission was created by a city ordinance on July 15, 1993, that promised office space, secretarial aid, and financial assistance to pursue its objectives. The Historic Preservation Commission is a CLG, Certified Local Government, which by its definition is committed to local preservation and saving the past for future generations. Having said that, first and foremost, the HPC is not your adversary. An adversary is one who opposes an enemy, and we are not your enemy. We are simply an advocate for authentic preservation, and we have no authority to require you to do anything. Rocco O'Neill said that Jim Davis and Shelley Horn do not own the Roundhouse. Of course, we don't, but thank you, Rocco, for recognizing the passion we have for our responsibilities as preservation commissioners. We take our obligation very seriously. Is it the goal of HPC to preserve just any old site? Absolutely not. Age alone is not a criteria for preservation. Local, regional, and national historical significance justifies consideration for preservation. In the past, our city has done an impressive job of preserving sites that reflect our history and our culture. Some of the projects that HPC has been involved in that you would recognize are the Wasatch Water Tank, the 42420 Steam Engine, Depot Square, the Machine Shop, Lincoln Highway and Highway 30 Kiosk, the Presbyterian Church Windows, the Wyoming State Hospital Cemetery, and the historic Wyoming State Hospital Buildings, excuse me, the Chinese Dig Site, and of course, the Roundhouse. Evanston really has some of the most valuable historic assets in the United States, and this is not just my opinion. We have been told by more than one architect that we should do all that we can to recognize the incredible value of the historic Roundhouse and Turntable. We have been told by more than one architect that we should do all that we can to recognize the incredible value of the historic Roundhouse and Turntable. Then there's the 4420, an extremely rare engine built in 1914. There are very few of them that exist today, and we know of only one that is operable. It's in California, and it cannot run because of California environmental laws. So what do we do when you have one of a kind of something that is so rare? Wouldn't you want to proudly show it to the entire world? Might there be thousands of envious railroad enthusiasts who would travel to Evanston to see these treasures? Or do we just lack vision? Our commissioners work untold hours without pay. We do research. We fundraise hundreds of thousands of dollars. We recruit and train volunteers. We write grant requests, and we travel and support them. Maybe this explains why four of the seven commissioners are over 80, and a fifth commissioner is 70-plus years of age. Now, I won't say this reluctantly, and it's just my opinion. But the years of delay in starting this project at the Roundhouse have really had an adverse effect. And the city's possible misunderstanding of the federal grant rules may have contributed to the delay. That's just my opinion, and I know it's an opinion that may very well be disputed. Your original plans for the Roundhouse Trailhead was eventually approved by SHPO and by YDOT. We had argued our position vociferously. We did not get all we wanted. We accepted that and hoped that construction would begin. When you rejected all of the bids for the project because of unacceptable prices, you were required to start all over. SHPO and YDOT may have only seen the new plan recently. The date on the new plan is sometime in April, but we did not see it until yesterday. Now you have asked us to approve the plan immediately, more or less abandoning our concerns. As I said, Jim, our chairman is out of town, and the soonest that we are able to meet with you will be on Friday. We realize that you need to receive new bids and get this project started as soon as possible. But the delay is not our fault. Had you accepted a bid for the new plan without the approval of YDOT and SHPO and carried out your plan, you could have been subject to returning all of the grant funds. There just are no shortcuts to this process. Nothing can go forward until YDOT and SHPO approve the plan after considering and either accepting or rejecting the HPC input. The HPC exists to help, not to hinder any historic preservation work going on in the city. I emphasize again that we have no approval authority, and we have no final say about any preservation projects. We consult, we recommend, and negotiate in good faith. We have never had everything our way, and we do not expect to. We believe ourselves to be advocates with the very best of intentions. But while that does not mean that we are always right, we are always passionate. The Evanston Historic Preservation Commission stands ready, not as an adversary, but as an advocate, to help the city to complete the work on the Roundhouse Trailhead access. Realize, of course, we still have a passion for historically significant accuracy. We look forward to starting a dialogue with you on Friday morning at 10:00, if that's convenient for you. That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, sir. We will plan on that meeting Friday morning, and I hope for a productive discussion. And I trust that it will be.
Yes.
I do also want to point out, though, that, and you mentioned, that your committee has no decision-making authority. But I think the value of your opinion, I think, is noted and is recognized by not only the city, but also by YDOT and by SHPO and by all those. So while you might not have any necessarily spelled out or authority that's, you know, written out in language that's provided you with authority, you certainly have a significant amount of clout, just given your presence, quite frankly, and your commission as a whole and the history that each of your commission members represent. And I respect that. And I look forward to a discussion on Friday, and I hope that that's a, I trust that it will be productive.
Thank you, Mayor. We're looking forward to it. I think we'll come up with a reasonable result.
I think so, too. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council for any reason? Senator?
All rise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, Landry Schuler, 200 Liberty, representing most of our county. I just had a couple of quick announcements that I thought were appropriate since I was here. First of all, next week, I'll be headed to Jackson. I'm on a regulatory reduction task force. And we're looking at ways to try to make housing easier with less regulations from both cities and counties and the state. And so I would really encourage you to take a look at all of your zoning and anything at all you think that might be a barrier for housing, since obviously that's going to be an issue in the next little while, not just here, but throughout the state. And be happy to hear anything that you have. I've visited, I think, with Mr., I think he's gone, Mr. Paxton. I've visited with a few folks around town already. And so I have some ideas. But love to hear any thoughts that you have. We're going to focus on housing and energy, at least for this first meeting. So that's next week. And then I wanted to also mention that this next thing is a little far into the distance. But on July 4, 2026, we will be celebrating throughout the nation the 250th signing of the Declaration of Independence. I'm on a task force. I can't seem to say no to the governor. And so I'm on that. And we're trying to meet in every corner of the state, every city. So I chose June 10 to have them come over here. And we'll be meeting over here in the Patterson Building. Some of the folks will be on Zoom. But we encourage anybody. I've already talked to Mika, and I hadn't had a chance to grab Rocco yet. But anybody that would like to come to that, we'd be happy to have you there. And we have a number of folks from around the community. I think Kane is kind of interested in it, too. But we just want to know what kinds of things you'd like to see for that. We want to celebrate not only as a state, but every county and every city. And I was in a meeting last week in Cody, and we were talking to their folks. And I looked around the room, and I asked how many of them remembered the bicentennial. And there were only about three of us. So, you know, there are a lot of young folks that don't even remember what a great celebration that was. And it was awesome. And we just hope to make the 250th even bigger and better. So there's that. And then, last but not least, since Councilman Sellers brought this up, there will be a meeting next month with the mental health. And they call it the Mental Health and Vulnerable Task Force. I got off of that. That is one thing I did get off of, not because I wanted to, but I just had too many other things on my plate. And it'll be in Kemmer. And the folks there will be talking about a number of issues with mental health. And I think that's, even if you don't go over to it, it's worth taking a look at it via Zoom. And it kind of has motivated me. I've talked with a few people around the county. And I think we should probably try and incorporate our UNA County group that we had two years ago. Maybe it was three years ago. I can't remember. Chief Rannish was on it. We talked about all the issues that we have with mental health and suicide in UNA County. We involve the state hospital, High Country Pioneer, our city police, our county folks, and so on and so forth. And so I'm kind of looking for August to try and reconvene that. So I'll give you more updates on that as time goes on. But anyway, keep doing great work. It's great not to see on the front page of the paper. Let the county do that right, or the state. And good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Long as you're not in the obituaries, that's all. Anyone else? Mr. Eskelson, please.
Mayor and councilpeople, I would like to announce that this last weekend, four of us from 4420 project, John Davis, Steve Ewing, and Shane, our youngest member, right? And myself. After a year of trying, we was able to get two, three days over in Cheyenne this last weekend to spend with Ed Dickens, who's U.P.'s number-one steam man who put together the Big Boy. And we got to spend a couple of days with the people that worked on it. Eight people is all that has, in over the years, worked on, made this possible. So they invited us over. They had a lecture Friday. They had open house where we could go talk to the mechanics, the machinists, the engineers on the Big Boy. And so there was an opportunity for us to learn a lot and take in. And our rapport with them now, especially with Ed Dickens, is fantastic. I can email him a question at any time, and he will give us an answer. He's even offered us tools for free to be able to do the boiler. So this last weekend was a big deal to the four of us. So I just want you to know. And the Big Boy will be through here the 3rd and 4th of July. So we hoping with our historic commission and the city that they have open arms to the Big Boy. Because if you remember what happened, 4,000-plus people showed up. And they're on a trip to go to the West Coast, up and around. And it's a big deal. You know, if you've never seen it, you've got to stand by it. Also, I'd like to mention that Thursday, between 5:00 and 8:00, a big open house on the Roundhouse. And we're having some different people talk. And we'd like to invite you. Sometimes we announce this, and people just say, I will stay home. But please, bring yourself, your families, and come over. It'll be at the Roundhouse Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? We'll adjourn then. Thank you, everyone.